Good evening, everybody. It is with great pleasure and privilege that I sit here tonight. Thank everybody for coming and everybody watching at home. I thank each and every single one of you. Today is Thursday, July 13th. The time is now 6:30, and I call this meeting to order. We're going to start with the invocation by Pastor Kathleen Casper from Living Word Fellowship, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Jocelyn, our city manager.
Lord, I thank you for bringing me here tonight for this time of prayer. It is always a great privilege, Lord, to be asked to give the invocation at this City Hall meeting. Lord, I look at the agenda tonight, and I can't help but ask you, when will this city be healed? Your answer would be when this city and its leaders turn to you with all of its heart, soul, strength, and mind. Lord, your word declares unless the Lord builds the city, it's builder's labor in vain. Lord, there is no good thing anyone can do, no good thing anyone can do without you. Lord, Alice, Texas is in desperate need of you. Oh, Lord, come, turn this city away from its many sins to live for you alone. Deliver us from evil. Lead us in your everlasting way. It is in Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Thank you, Ms. Casper. Okay, we're going to now go on to Agenda Item Number Two, Citizen Comments and Public Announcements. At this time, let me share with you a few tips. Again, welcome to the City Council meeting. A citizen who has a request for city services or other items of concern, which cannot be approved or otherwise resolved by the city manager, may choose to address the council. Citizens who wish to address the City Council about items on the agenda which are scheduled for council action will have three minutes to express their position. Please indicate the Agenda Item number on which you wish to comment and the subject. Any complaints and/or discussions about individuals, personnel, council members, city staff, or other persons would be out of order and will not be heard by the City Council at this time. Charges or complaints about specific individuals shall be presented in writing to the city manager. All complaints of this nature must be signed and dated by the individual filing the complaint and will be addressed pursuant to Alice Personnel Policies. In the essence of time, presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each, and individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional three minutes with the approval of the council. Please approach the speaker's stand, state your full name, address, and when you begin your remarks in order that the official minutes will record your appearance before the City Council and discuss the topic of interest. If you have written notes you wish to present to the mayor and council, please furnish an extra copy to the city clerk for the official files. Please direct your comments to the mayor and council. Although council cannot take specific action on citizens' comments, comment topics due to legal requirements, they will hear the topic and council may have the item placed on a future agenda for action or refer the item to staff or study or conclusion. Thank you for your cooperation. At this time, we're going to listen to Ms. Pitts, if you would come up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Maria Elena Castillo-Pitts. I reside at 1,000 Gibson in Alice, Texas. I was born and raised here. I am the proud granddaughter of Don Pablo Castillo, owner of one of the first mom-and-pop businesses in Alice, a fruteria, curry shop, that was located on the corner of Mesquite and South Reynolds, where we now have another locally-owned business, Little Boltonet. I am here in support of Andy Jocelyn. Andy has always had the best interests of Alice. After all, he was born and raised here. And the majority of his family still lives here, and we were all born and raised here as well. Andy has served his community by enlisting in the military forces, keeping us safe as we slept at night and enjoyed our freedom each and every day. Andy has served this community as a law enforcement officer, keeping us safe and protecting us as we slept at night. Andy, too, has had countless of sleepless nights as he stayed up working on solutions that would be in the best interests of our city. Since Andy came back to Alice and operated a business, is operating a business with his wife Melissa, they have attended, if not all, but the majority of the City Council meetings. Even upon not receiving the position of city manager initially, Andy still remains supportive of this city, not only by his attendance at City Council meetings, but by supporting other events in our city. If he has made any decisions that were not appealing, it was only because he was looking out for the best interests of this city. I am not here to disrespect anyone or their opinion. I am simply here just to voice my concerns. It was only because he always has the best interests that now we are looking at this agenda. As I said, I am not here to disrespect anyone or their opinion, nor would I ever want to. I am simply asking that upon consideration, you take these things in mind. Andy is a man of character and a professional. We were all raised humbly, but one thing our grandparents instilled in us was to work hard. I know that Andy has done that. David, too, has worked hard for this community, and especially the children. He is a humble man, professional, and active in his church. When asked out in the community, why are Andy and David being evaluated? Is it because of politics? Perhaps you have that answer. When asked if it was because of the multi-use accomplice, perhaps you have that answer. What I do know is that I was the first individual to sign up for a membership at the auditorium. When Mr. Pete Beltran pushed forward to open, to open the auditorium back in July 1st, unfortunately, I became ill with a life-threatening illness which not only affected my body, but my ankle.
That's your time, hon.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Counsel, can I just have one tenth more seconds, please?
Counsel?
Okay.
I agree.
I'll leave you with two things. If all of a sudden we were struck with a disaster, I guarantee you we would all help each other and do the right thing. After all, we are buena gente. Second, I'll leave you with all the Scripture Jeremiah 29:11. "For I know my plans I have for you," declares the Lord. Dear women of God, be still for a while and praise God for His favor, His grace, and His awareness, awesomeness. God is able to do the impossible and always, always. He loves us unconditionally. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Castillo? Pablo?
How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
I'm Pablo Castillo Jr. Of course, cousin, and a bunch of family members here. I'm here to support Andy Jocelyn, my first cousin, and not only because he's my cousin. I have a bunch of family out here, and as Nana Pitts said, I actually live on the property where Don Pablo Castillo lived. I actually own a business there right now. I have tattoos, never been arrested, never been put in jail. I can hold my head up high and say that. I have a CDL, I have a DBA, I have a small business license. This man comes to seize me regardless because he's my cousin or not to see how I'm doing. He asks me, hey, how's it is? Pete in the back comes to check on us. All my cousins here, we all have our differences, we see everything. But when I see this man, I look at him, not only because I'm one of the babies of the cousins, but because we look up to him, you know what I mean? And, I mean, he, his brother was another good friend of mine, and he knows what I'm talking about, my family knows too. We've always came from a family that's always been strong, united, and we also have that business in our blood. We also have that mentality where we don't take no as an answer. We have, I mean, like I said, we are determined, we strive. I mean, that's where he's at, where he's at right now. I'm pretty sure we just didn't hand it to him, just like they didn't hand it to me, didn't hand it to my family. You know, people look down on us. They look down on Alice or whatever they want to call it, but in reality, if we unite as one, we can all be together and make Alice better, like they say. I know my voice is kind of, you know, I'm nervous, you know, but, I mean, like my cousin William would say, you know, we just keep on going forward. And I say, we work it out. He's a good man. Everybody in this room is good people. They say Alice is buena gente, meaning Dallas is good people. No, we're all good people. I'm here to represent not only for my cousin, but for my family in the back and for everybody here in Alice, Texas. Like I said, and Nana Pitts couldn't say, I mean, I'm going to call her hammer because she nailed it. She couldn't have said it better. We come from a family from generation, from generation to generation. And like I said, I get stereotyped a lot, because, I mean, I've got a lot of tattoos, of course, but, I mean, we also have a lot of mind up here. And then people say, Pablo, you look like this and look like this. You know what? I tell people, I'd rather let them look at me like that, that way they won't have to ask me for money. I make a joke about it, you know what I mean? But he knows, he knows me better than anybody else. Everybody, all my family right here, I've been, when they told me about this, we actually had four leaks.
It's time, hon. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
God bless you. Team Andy.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Garcia, Jimmy Garcia?
He's on the road right now. We should be here in five minutes.
Okay, my dear. Okay. Melissa?
I know how excited everyone gets when Andy's wife comes up here to divent him. My name is Melissa Popham, and I am the proud wife of Andy Jocelyn. And I thank you all for being here to support my husband today. "A house divided against itself cannot stand," Mark 3:25. I fully realize that a decision has probably already been made as to Andy's city manager position, and that's okay. I don't come here to beg for it. However, I want to spend some time to come before you, to hush the negative, to hush the lies, and to let you ladies here tonight know that no matter what, we will walk out of here a united couple, with a very united family and a very united home. What we have, you can't take away from us, nor will you ever have it. You don't scare us. We're not stupid. You put us on the agenda, and then you make a call. Did he resign? Not happening. No, ma'am. Y'all have to ask where is all the ugliness and the bitterness coming from? And today, I feel a little bitter. It's not usually my nature. Maybe just someone up here can't hide their crazy, or maybe someone's bitter because they can't get to that top notch that they want so bad. Or maybe it's the worst of all, a coward who can't speak, the one that is dressed in a wolf, the one that is dressed as a wolf in sheep's clothing, with that tiny little voice that actually fooled some people in Alice, thinking that maybe you were here for the right reason. Matthew 7:15 states, "Beware of false prophets, which come to you in sheep's clothing; but inwardly they are raving wolves." Andy brought Alice unity, hard work, countless hours of dedication. He's worked well, not only for himself, but with his staff. They developed a system that has been successful. He came in knowing that the city had a very heavy budget. Did he collect a check for a few months and say, I can't handle it? No, of course he didn't. He and his staff work long hours, evenings, Saturdays. They took drastic measures to cut the budget by millions. This only happened because of his direction, his leadership, and the dedication that this man has brought to this City Hall. We relocated here because Andy has a great pride for the city that he grew up in. We opened our business, and yes.
Guns and glamour is open. Five ways. We are open.
Little did we know when we got here, he would be hired to fix an otherwise broken city. I believe that Andy has made great strides in doing so. The city means much more to Andy.
It's time, hon.
Mayor, may I respectfully ask for just a little additional time?
Counsel, do you approve?
Yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This man goes above and beyond to make things happen. The perfect example is this Fourth of July celebration that just took place in our city. Our family planned vacation for the Fourth was put on hold so that we could attend all of the events. We attended every function that went on in different areas. A great event it was. It was awesome. We enjoyed it tremendously. We entered the multi-use center, and immediately we were approached for trash bags, and the bathroom's dirty, and there's trash, and this, and that, and so forth and so on. Was this a problem for Andy? No, it wasn't. He sent myself and our family, including our parents, on to go enjoy the festivities that were going on, and he addressed it just like the leader that he is. He walked around himself and picked up other people's trash. Filth starts with us, so we could all pick up after ourselves, so we don't have to blame anyone else. And then a call came in while we were enjoying our time. The manhole was overflowing at Sunset in Maine. And then there's not, the baseball fields are locked, the restrooms at the fields are backing up, and it went on and on and on. It never ends. There's always something. But these things he addresses without a second thought. It's a way of life, because that is the leader you have. Thursday evening last week, he came home from work, and he didn't feel well. Finally, on Friday, I convinced him, please, go to the ER. There's something wrong. That's the same evening that I understand maybe a plan was made to put him on this agenda, whether it be legit, that you just wanted to evaluate, or that you really want to dismiss him. And you, one of you even had the nerve to text him, knowing he was in the ER. It's pretty pathetic. Told him, take care of yourself. To tell you how things really went, as he lay in the ER, he had to listen to an Alice resident complain to him that he didn't have enough water pressure to run his new sprinkler system. What did he do? He calmly spoke to this man and assured him that his street was next on the list, that he had just met the day before, and it would be taken care of. You can replace people all day long. The problem isn't your city attorney. He's a fine man. He's a man of God. It isn't your employees. They're amazing. They're awesome. And it isn't this man. It's not your city manager. It's you. The unity comes right here. You direct, and you make things happen. You are the example that you set for the rest of us. Your actions are everywhere, not just in Alice, Texas. They're everywhere. So you go ahead and you do what you have planned today. I have peace in my heart as I stand here in front of you today. But remember, when we walk out of here, when we walk out of here, we're united, and you can't take that away. And as one of my favorite people in the whole world would say, peace out, girl scout.
Thank you, Ms. Melissa. Mr. Marriott? Marriott Colton?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel.
Good afternoon.
My name is Colton Marriott, and I reside 1118 Arcadia Drive. And Andy Jocelyn right there is my father. I send for you today, surrounded by love and support, not to question your decision to my father's job. I come here before you today to ask you to dream more, learn more, and most of all, to love more. As some, as someone who takes an interest in politics, I come to these meetings ready to experience the world of politics. It is disappointing to me that my elders are not educated on basic knowledge of how politics work, and that, and that you should, before taking these seats as councilwomen, be educated on this knowledge. So if I want but one request from you, that is to learn more. My dream for y'all and the future of Alice is to look past your self-righteousness and move forward with clarity in your speech, your thoughts, and in your actions. As often as I come, I've yet to see a meeting take place where there are no threats being made or snide remarks being said. As the people who run our city and make decisions that impact all of the citizens of Alice, I pray that you, the council, can move past your hatred and disagreement and help our city prosper. As I stand, as you can see standing behind me, love above all is present tonight. The love that is present surrounds my dad, Andy Jocelyn, who has been a blessing to our city and our family. He is someone who doesn't think of this as his job, but his way of life. He is someone with tremendous drive, motivation, and above all, the most humble and thoughtful person I know. I thank God every day that I'm able to call him my dad. As you sit up here today with your hateful glares towards my father and your family, I want y'all to take one thing away from me speaking today, and that is to love more. Thank you. God be with us all.
This time, there are no more citizen comments. I'll take announcements. Ms. Carrasco, you have anything for us today? Ms. Garza?
No.
Mr. Crisp?
No.
Ms. Moran?
Yes, I'd just like to offer a big congratulations and thank you to the Alice Parks and Recreation Board for the outstanding job that they did in such a short time in preparation for the four-day Fourth of July event, and also to the staff that helped us on short notice out there, tailor and lifeguards, and everyone else who worked together to make this a very successful event. The numbers are out. I'm not sure what they are, but as soon as we get them, we'll let you know. But we do know that it was a very huge success, and it did make a profit. So thank you, everyone, for participating.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. And I would, I would like to take the time to, I caught somebody doing something good. I want to thank Josh, I don't know where he is, but Josh was called in to come in on his vacation time, and he gracefully did. We had a company coming into town, a new company that was having a few struggles, and they reached out to me, and Mr. Jocelyn was in a meeting, and so he asked me to get with Josh, and Josh came in on his day off and helped the little problems that were happening go over smoothly. So I want to thank him for being a good employee and doing what was good at that time. I also want to say thank you to the Parks and Recs Board. They, they did have a beautiful four-day celebration, which was very nice, and it was a success. It was beautiful. There was lots of people. It was really, really good. Everybody worked together and did a great job, and that was beautiful. And I also want to remind everybody this weekend, the Twin Cam Rally will be going on this weekend. They have planned this event for over a year, and it's, they've almost sold out every hotel room in Alice, so I'm very proud of that. And it's, it's a privately sponsored organization, so that's really an amazing thing that doesn't cost the city a penny, you know, because they, they do it themselves. So I was, I was very, very proud to be of assistance when I can. So kudos to Calaveras for doing a great job, and I anticipate it being a success. And being bigger next year is what they say, so hopefully we'll all be able to experience that. Thank you, everybody. At this time, Mr. Garcia came in. I don't know, Mr. Towler, if that would be appropriate to allow him to speak or...
If, if Counsel would...
Mayor, if the Agenda Item hasn't been closed, if you want to allow that, it's up to you.
Mr. Garcia, would you like to speak?
Hi, I'm running a little late. Sorry. I apologize. For once, thank y'all for letting me have the time to come here and talk while I'm running late. And I come to you as a concerned cityan, citizen of Alice, due to what's going on right now. You know, we've made, this town has no foundation, and we have not completed any business that needs to get done. Y'all think the oil field's going to come back, and it's not. You know, the other day, one of the councilwomen said that she was working on a deal to get people to get educated, to leave town to go work. We need to build businesses to town. You know, none of y'all have, have done this. Y'all have made a swimming pool divide a whole town. Look at behind me, how many people stand, you know, and put people at odds. You know, we understand it's here, costs a lot of money, we have to use it while we can, but we need to focus on bringing businesses back to Alice. Use what you have. You have two big highways, you have railways. If you depend on oil fields to come back, it's not going to happen, you know? And y'all need to, you know, unite together instead of being so embarrassing. Embarrassing, look at the news in San Antonio and Corpus. I mean, we make the papers all over. Why? Because y'all cannot conduct business. Everything that brings up to the floor is tabled, you know? I understand that there's a recall coming up and this and that, and, you know, some of our citizens want it, some of it don't, but, you know, that's our right. If we want to call a recall, that's our right to do it. I don't have anything against anybody up here. But what I do have a problem is when y'all can't get your act together, you know? Look at everybody that's here. Why? Because y'all can't work together as one. Y'all got to fight, and it's sad. It's sad that it's come down to where, you know, we're repeating history again and again and again. Look, y'all want to get rid of the city manager, the attorney, you're repeating history. Look at the history Alice has. When are y'all going to step up to the plate and make a difference in this town and work together? You know, it's sad that what it's come down to, you know? Andy took a job when nobody else wanted it. Why? Because when he was coming into this job, he was going to have to let people go, cut their pay, and how many people lined up for it? Not many. Not many at all, you know? And I told him, why would you want to take a job like this? Because you're going to be one of the most hated people in town. But people respected him for what he did, and I respected him for taking the job that he took, because it takes a person with a big set to come in.
It's your time, Mr. Garcia. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. God bless.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, as per request, we're gonna, we're gonna either jump to Agenda Item Number 13, because City Council may enter into closed or executive session for the following matters. 13A, Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney, private consultation with city attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, a settlement offer or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with Texas Government Code Chapter 551, and specifically including the status of pending sales of city real property, including but not limited to Harkins Industrial Park, 10 acres, and 3001 Old Kingsville Road, 10 acres. 13B, Government Code 551.071, personnel-related matters to deliberate the evaluation, duties, appointment, or dismissal of a public officer, the city attorney.
And Mayor, on that one, I requested that be held in open session, not closed.
Yes, sir. Granted. 13C, Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney to engage in a private consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the attorney has a duty to provide confidential legal advice relating to the evaluation, employment, appointment, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public office, the city attorney, and the city's rights, duties, and obligations related to appointing an interim city attorney. 13D, Government Code 551.071, personnel-related matters to consider the evaluation, employment, appointment, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager.
Mayor, I respectfully request that in open session also.
Granted. Thank you, sir. 13E, Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney to engage in a private consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the attorney has a duty to provide confidential legal advice relating to the evaluation, employment, appointment... legal advice relating to the evaluation, employment, appointment, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager, and the city's rights, duties, and obligations under the city manager, severance agreement, and appointing an interim city manager. And following the advice of the attorney, we'll go into closed session to discuss 13C and 13E.
And A.
A, A, C, and E. And then we'll regress. So at this time, it's seven o'clock, and we will now go into closed session.